All right, good morning. My name is Dan Gorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting of April 12th, 2023. Our agenda today is all about the world's borough, Queens. We've got a couple of votes and a public hearing on commercial projects found throughout the borough. First up, the commission will vote on two fitness-related proposals. The first is to allow a gym to occupy the second floor of an existing building at 6110 Queens Boulevard near the Big Six Towers, a notable Mitchell Lama development built in the 1960s that provides income-restricted housing to nearly 1,000 families. The second, which started as a proposal for office and warehouse space, is now an enlargement of an existing gym as proposed at 2650 Brooklyn Queens Expressway West. And our sole public hearing for today might even offer an opportunity to keep Queens' health kick going. We'll hear from New Yorkers and certainly from the applicant team on 189-10 Northern Boulevard, a proposed commercial building in Auburndale with ground-floor retail offices for an architectural firm and community facility space dedicated to either a medical center or daycare, both of which would be good amenities here for the surrounding residential neighborhood. So with that by way of introduction, Madam Secretary, the floor is yours.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting, held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. I will now call the roll. Chair Gorodnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Bozard.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Kral.
Present.
Commissioner DeWitt is absent. Commissioner Gold is absent. Commissioner Goodrich. Commissioner Carmani.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
And Commissioner Ramperchat is remote.
I can see him. There he is.
Akorm is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of a special public meeting of Monday, March 27th, 2023.
Terrific. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 27. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes approved.
Scheduling, calendar numbers one through three. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, April 26th, 2023, for a public hearing to be held in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Marin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page five. Borough of Queens, calendar number four. 6110 Queens Boulevard rezoning. CD2, C230052ZMQ. And the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 6110 Queens Boulevard rezoning for a favorable report on calendar number four. Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozard.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Kral.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes, I just have a quick suggestion. If we can, in our report, highlight the Board President's recommendation on the 30% local hiring requirements, that would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramperchat. Looks like we lost him. So if you prefer.
Okay, well, let's see if we can get him back and we can come back to him for the vote on calendar four.
Borough of Queens, calendar number five. 2650 Brooklyn Queens Expressway West rezoning. CD1, C210283ZMQ. And the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 2650 Brooklyn Queens Expressway West rezoning for a favorable report on calendar number five. Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozard.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Kral.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes, similar recommendation here. I think that it would be also important to highlight the Board President's recommendation on the local hiring requirements and in this case also the sustainability requirements that both applicants committed to when they spoke to us. Thank you.
And although Commissioner Ramperchat is recused on this item, favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers five and four. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page six.
Before we go to the public hearing, let's give Commissioner Goodrich an opportunity to vote on 6110 Queens Boulevard, which was calendar item four we did just before you walked in.
I'm so sorry. My vote is yes. I'm sorry about that.
Great, thank you. And did Commissioner Ramperchat, is he back?
Not at all.
Okay, we will call on him when he is. Okay, great. Sorry to interrupt the flow. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number six. 18910 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay. CD11, C220218ZMQ. Public hearing as a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 18910 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay.
Great. Thank you very much. We have, the applicant is here, represented by Richard Lovell, Jerry Hay, James Chen, Shannon Zhao, Kevin Williams, and Amanda Ianati. And Mr. Lovell, we can see you. Welcome. When you are ready, you have three minutes and you can go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, good morning. Richard Lovell of Sheldon Lovell, PC. I'm joined by the applicant team to present 18910 Northern Boulevard rezoning. Next slide, please. So this is a very straightforward rezoning. We will be rezoning, should we be approved, five lots and a portion of a sixth lot from existing R3X-C23, from existing R3X and R32 to R3XC23 and R32C23. This would add a commercial overlay on all our portions of such lots. And right now, as the commission is likely aware, Northern Boulevard being a major commercial thoroughfare is mapped for much of its length with existing C2 commercial overlays for greater than 20 blocks to the east of the site. So this rezoning will allow for this proposed development, a three-story-plus seller building. As was indicated by Chair Gorodnik, this would have community facility space on the third floor, retail space on the ground floor, and commercial office space on the second floor. There would be a setback of 10 feet at the front yard and a total height of 40 feet. Parking would be provided in the cellar and ground floor as required under zoning. Importantly to note, the total height of the building at 40 feet would be permissible within the underlying R32 district. This is not a rezoning which focuses on bulk but which focuses on use, as we will discuss in the upcoming three slides. The next slide demonstrates the zoning map, which shows the existing zoning districts and to note the commercial overlays beginning immediately to the east of this block and extending greater than 20 blocks eastward. The next slide is the tax map, which shows the proposed zoning with regards to these lots. And I think the area map, which is the next slide, really demonstrates why this rezoning is particularly appropriate here. Regardless and despite the fact that there is no commercial overlay currently on the site, of the six lots fronting on Northern Boulevard, all five other than the applicant-owned site currently have commercial uses. So either grandfathered commercial uses nonconforming in the form of a restaurant and parking to the west of the site or pursuant to BSA variance granted variously through variances in special permits since 1971 to the east of the site. So in essence, the change in the zoning map here would merely reflect what is actually already on the ground and importantly would not burden the applicant and future applicants for properties located along this frontage with the requirement of coming in to BSA for repeatedly updated approvals when in essence, we all know that this is a commercial thoroughfare. And of course, Northern Boulevard here being a major thoroughfare at 100 feet wide can easily accommodate the proposed C23 commercial overlay. The next several slides contain pictures of the development site as well as the surrounding area. Again, note the commercial use to the east as well as to the west of the site. Feel free to page through the pictures to the rendering of the site, which demonstrates an attractive three-story building and the proposed uses at the site. This would allow for not only the productive use of the property but for allowing for the uses on the block to be conforming commercial uses. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lovell. My one question for you is about the history of the site relative to the 20 blocks to the east that you cited that all have the commercial overlay. Putting aside the existing condition, which clearly is commercial here, what was the history of the overlay existing 20 blocks to the east but not on this particular block in question?
Yes, so the site historically has been zoned without a commercial overlay for the entirety of its existence since the 61 zoning resolution. So the adjoining commercial overlays were established and this block was merely burdened by grandfathered conforming uses which in essence were altered pursuant to these two BSA actions. So there is a large furniture store, medical office or medical supply, auto-related uses. All of those existing commercial uses have been in existence on this block since the 1970s and after. And so in essence, it was seen as unnecessary to apply a commercial overlay zoning to the site. Having said that, those applicants have been repeatedly forced to come before BSA for, as the Chair is aware, a lengthy and arduous process, a costly process. And so it really is just an appropriate time to put a commercial overlay here and to allow these owners to make changes to their property as a right at DOB. Often, we discuss the option of going to BSA and whether or not it offers a superior outcome. Here, that's not the case. You've got over 80% of this frontage on Northern Boulevard is already commercial. And I think that there's always some misunderstanding in the process. This would not necessarily make a good BSA application. To come in with a rectangular lot, there's not necessarily any uniqueness to the site or any hardship, but that doesn't mean it's not a good rezoning. And here, given the context of the surrounding uses both on the block and for blocks to the east and west, it's clearly a commercial site.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Benjamin.
I was wondering if you could help us understand why the community board opposed this application?
Sure, Mr. Benjamin. So there was a split vote. I believe it was 10 in favor, 27 against. And we did have a spirited and thorough discussion of the community board. And I think that the real disagreement really revolved around two things. It was bulk and proposed use. With regards to the bulk, there will be a three-story building here, but the underlying zoning that remains unchanged, the R32 remains unchanged, the height limitations imposed by the R32 remain unchanged. In fact, there are three-story buildings across from the property. So there was some discussion about whether or not the mere imposition of a commercial overlay here would result in some fundamental change in the bulk of the site. It will not. The second thing, and I think which was more fundamental, as was repeated by those opposing of the community board, was this feeling of why can't they go to BSA? And why can't they just do what the other lots did on this block? And our office, as a matter of record, has filed over 800 applications at the Board of Standards and Appeals. For appropriate applications, we of course would seek out appropriate relief at the Board of Standards and Appeals. However, that application and those applications are very different. Here you have a rectangular site. There is no uniqueness as would be required under 7221A. There is not necessarily any financial hardship that would be imposed because of the site limitations. Here, it just makes sense from a land use rationale, from a rezoning rationale. So the community board and the members who did oppose felt that we should go to BSA, in essence, so that the community board could have control over what came into the site in terms of BSA plans and approvals. But the truth of the matter is, it's not a BSA application. It doesn't meet the findings. It wouldn't meet the findings. And it's really appropriate now, as of 2023 and in this atmosphere, in this environment, to bring it into city planning and to rezone the property.
Did the community board tell you what conditions they would have wanted had you been at BSA, which you could not have been? I understand that. But were there conditions that they were concerned about that they communicated to you?
Not with specific.
As their reason for wanting you to go the BSA route?
Yeah, you know, we do have those conversations with community boards often. And oftentimes, the community board will say, you know, we prefer these types of conditions and limitations. And you know, to the credit of the applicants here, they are community people. We were open to those discussions, et cetera. But we didn't really, it didn't really go to that discussion. It merely was ended at, you know, we want, the community wanted to exercise site control. You know, the commercial uses that abound on Northern Boulevard are the same commercial uses as would be existing at the site. You know, ground-floor retail, office use, community facility use. So in essence, you know, it was a, I think the community board wanted to just to have site control and control over plans. And that's not necessarily something which would be beneficial to a commercial operator here who, as the commission is aware, is in a challenging environment. Commercial uses, it's not a given that you're going to have a tenant that's going to be a productive tenant these days. And so in an area where there are commercial uses, I think we want to provide the tenants and the owners flexibility in order to house appropriate commercial uses. So again, I just think that there was that basically fundamental disagreement about what agency we should go to. And the fact is, we would never have gotten relief at BSA for an application of this nature.
Okay, and last, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. The owner in this case is the architectural firm that is occupying a floor here, the second floor. Is that correct?
Correct. So it is a development firm, you know, which focuses on construction and has architectural professionals. So it's, yeah, architectural slash development firm would be occupying the professional offices.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to, I had two questions. The first one, building on Commissioner Benjamin's question. I was wondering if you can expand a little bit on your response, your position on the first point, the initial sort of concerns that the community board raised in terms of the bulk and the massing. Can you highlight a little bit or expand what is the response? We understand from your presentation what they asked for, but I just want more clarity in terms of whether you're willing to accommodate some of that or what is your general response to that?
So with regards to the massing of the building, there were discussions around the fact that the building was going to be frankly three stories and whether or not, and there were discussions over the appropriateness of a three-story building. Fundamentally, the underlying R32 district here would allow a three-story building. The commercial overlay, which would merely allow ground-floor retail and office use on the second floor, has no effect on that three-story building. We look to the immediate area. We look across the street and there's a three-story building. So while there are not, while three-story buildings in this area are not common in that if you go up and down this block, you will find one-to-two-story buildings, you will find three-story buildings. So the idea that this rezoning was somehow contributing to a three-story building was just not the case. And so there was that bulk discussion. And I think that there was a fundamental disagreement about whether or not this site would merit a three-story building when in fact, one could be built as a right. With regards to the use, I understand and oftentimes the discussion goes around, we don't want bars. We don't want, you know, negative uses here which would impact the community in that way. My applicants here are, again, you know, we're very open in their conversations here. And I think, Commissioner, that the most important thing to note is that they will house their offices within this building. It would be contrary to their practice and to their, you know, good business sense to have a retail use on the ground floor, which was incompatible with their professional use of this building. They seek to produce a building which will be, which will contribute to the landscape here, which will, you know, which will in essence showcase what they are able to do. So it never really got to the fine-tune discussion we often have with community boards around, we just really don't want a bar. Like that's sometimes is the discussion, which, you know, it's fine by us. But frankly, the matter is that there's a C2 overlay here on 20 blocks of Northern Boulevard. And as I like to often say, the proof is in the pudding. What you're going to get on Northern Boulevard for the 20 blocks to the east of the site is what you're going to get on this block. In fact, the uses permitted by BSA variance, particularly the Use Group 16 auto-related use, is worse than what you'd be able to have in a C2 district here. The Use Group 16 uses are not even permitted in the C2 district. So there's already uses on this block which are violative of a C23 district. And there's not even any commercial district right now. So anything that we're proposing here will necessarily be a lesser intensive use than those Use Group 16 uses. And in essence, you know, to have known my applicants and to have seen them operate in this process for over two years in good faith, we have every confidence as an applicant team that we're going to build a building that people can be proud of and the uses will be respectful to the community.
Thank you. I have another, thank you for the clarification. I have another question. This one is related with the Board President's comments. I was wondering if you can summarize, what is your response to the recommendations on local hiring requirements and sustainability and resiliency plans or goals? And I also just highlight that your renders do not sort of like show how the building is responding to it. And I want to give you the opportunity to just expand a little bit and share with us how you plan to comply with the laws in question.
Sure. So in the first regard, just with regards to sustainability, we will be of course complying with the new energy code. In addition, the building at a minimum will have solar power and we understand that there will be more sensitive landscaping in and around the building. The renderings don't really reflect that and that they were done earlier, prior to the Queens Borough President's discussion. And also are of course illustrative, but it is our intention at a minimum, of course, to comply with law but also to provide solar and to provide sensitive landscaping. The applicant here also, and as a frequent representative before the Queens Borough President, we are very familiar with hiring requirements. And the applicant and the team has discussed complying with MBWE, minimum requirements for MBWE and local hiring. This is a locally-based development team which often uses MBWE subcontractors. So we're confident that we could satisfy minimum requirements. And as always, we will be in touch with the Queens Borough President with regards to our efforts in that respect going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Lovell and team. We appreciate your presentation and the answers to the questions. We have one member of the public signed up to testify on this item, also on Zoom, and we're going to set him up now. This is Henry Euler. Mr. Euler, I don't know if we're going to be able to see you, but I know we're going to be able to hear you. Whenever you are ready, you can go ahead and begin.
My name is Henry Euler. I'm the president of the Auburndale Improvement Association, which is a civic group that covers this area. And I'm also a member of Queens Community Board 11. I'm testifying only on behalf of my civic group today. I hope you received the package that I mailed to you last week. It contained a statement. And it also contained pictures of what's currently on 18910 Northern Boulevard and also a set of signatures. 65 people signed up in the immediate area against the overlay. This is a strange block because the houses that are on this block, there's 14 of them right behind the overlay site. So they're going to be directly impacted not only by this building but any other building that comes along. We feel that commercial overlay, if it's approved, any building conforming to the new overlay designation could be built on this block as a right at any time without public review. We, the civic organization, is satisfied with the current zoning on this block with no commercial overlay. If the applicant wishes to construct a new nonconforming building on this block, we believe that he or she should seek a Board of Standards and Appeals variance to do so. Likewise, any other nonconforming business or building proposed on this block should go through the variance process where applicable. This would give the community members, the civic association, the local community board, the right to recommend conditions beneficial to the community. Building sizes, height, parking concerns, and all of these other issues could be addressed. Now, we're not against businesses coming to the site, but we want to have input into what goes there, especially the people that live in the immediate area. They're very concerned about their neighborhood and they want to have input. And with putting a commercial overlay, anything that fits the C23 designation could be put there without any input, and that's wrong. Now, at the site presently, the picture they showed you is incorrect. It's not empty. There's a business there. It's a, has construction and building materials on it. It's an eyesore. It's a mess. We have filed complaints about it. We're working with our elected officials on it. This is hardly a way for this company to come to our community and start off. And they're very poor neighbors from what I can see with this business that's currently operating there. When are they going to get it removed? It's illegal and it should not be there. And so we're very upset. Now, one of the commissioners said on Monday that they don't have to stick to the plans for this new building. They could put anything they want as long as it meets the C23 conditions in the future. And that's basically my.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Euler. We appreciate your taking the time to be with us. We have a question from Commissioner Osorio for you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for your testimony. I appreciate that. I had two quick follow-up questions. The first one is, I was wondering if you can help us understand why you feel you haven't been heard? You said you wanted to have input in this proposal. Can you briefly summarize what the applicant's outreach efforts have been and why you feel you haven't been heard?
Well, we heard, I went to the committee meeting, the full board meeting, I voted there as well. We heard his proposal and there was some discussion, that's true. However, once we have, if we had a continuation where they would be required to get a variance, we would have even more input. We would be able to have a discussion. We're not against businesses coming there. We want to have input. That's the bottom line.
Thank you for your response. I have another quick follow-up question, which is, and I appreciate that you have highlighted you're not necessarily opposed to this, but I'm wondering what conditions can you offer the applicant for consideration at a point where, as Dave stated, as Dave stated, there are significant disagreements in terms of the initial concerns. But that doesn't mean that there could be a space for engagement, and I'm wondering if you have any recommendations or suggestions in terms of how to begin that conversation?
The community should be consulted, first of all. Uh they have ideas, they have uh worries about this building, that they're concerned about the height, frankly, and the uh size of it, and their backyards back up to this commercial overlay site. So they, you know, a lot of them have gardens and things going on in their backyards, and they they use them a lot for uh for family matters and things. So they're concerned about what's what's going to be there. So they really would like to have uh input as to what goes on. And the best way to do that is through a BSA um variance uh application.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vice Chair Knuckles.
Uh thank you, Mr. Euler, for your testimony. Uh you've indicated uh that you've indicated your concerns about the uh bulk or height of the building. I'm just wondering, what is the preference of your uh your organization uh with regard to the use of the site? Do you have a particular preference for what you'd like to see there?
Well, first of all, we don't want what's there right now on on one eighty-nine-ten. This is a an eyesore, all right? But what we would like to see, we would like to see uh a business operate there, and we wouldn't mind that. Um there's a restaurant to the west that seems to be fine, and of the other businesses along the way there, we have Verizon uh business, we have uh furniture store, they're fine. We have parking uh conditions there. And uh they're, you know, neighborhood kinds of businesses are fine, and even new buildings would be fine uh depending on the wishes of the community.
So is it, is it the the bulk or the height of the building that is your primary concern?
Well, right now, it it is uh the height. People are worried about the height, worried about the bulk, whether or not their backyards would be uh, they'd be able to carry on as they previously did, if their air or light would be shut off, that kind of thing. So that's, those are things that we could discuss with at BSA, with the community board, with the Borough President, uh to try to get conditions put in that would uh satisfy the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, thank you for your testimony, but Mr. LaBelle indicated that they would not be able to meet the findings. Um as you know, there are five findings required at BSA, one of which is the uniqueness of the lot. And from the drawings of the lot, it doesn't appear there's anything particularly unique about it. And also that that uniqueness presents a financial hardship, which they seem to be unable or believe they cannot prove, so that they would not be eligible for a BSA variance in their current condition. Um I just wanted to make sure that that was said, and to ask the Chair if we could have Mr. LaBelle come back. I have a few more questions for him.
If I could just comment briefly, Commissioner Benjamin, um we consulted a- yes, we consulted a um urban specialist about this this particular lot. And he informed us that he believes that they could seek a BSA variance, that there is something unique about the lot. It does have a bump in uh near the first house on one eighty-ninth street. In fact, they're extending the line right through the middle of this house, the the new uh overlay. And we asked at the at the uh community board, why, why are they going through the middle of that house? And the response was, well, because city planning likes straight lines. So I, we don't, we didn't understand that comment. That's what he told us.
Not, not untrue.
We do like a good straight line, line. Uh there's, there's no question about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um uh you know, before we go back, and I, and we we can, but before we call you back, Commissioner LaBelle, and thank you for your willingness to do that, let me just see if there are any other questions for, for Mr. Euler. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, I do have a question for Mr. Euler. Sorry. Commissioner Rampershead.
Uh thank you. Thank you. I don't know if you can hear me. I apologize for the uh technical difficulties.
We can hear you fine.
Nice. Uh I just have one quick question. Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it. Um I was just wondering, what use would the community like to see there? I know you mentioned, I know you're worried about the bulk and the casty shadows at the residential in the back. What use is that community were looking or prefer to have in that area?
I don't think the community would object to a building that was appropriate for the space the, in terms of site, and appropriate for the community, appropriate to what's already in along this particular stretch. You know, we have a history, we have a history about uh this particular lot at this particular uh site and and going westward. Uh when they did the rezonings, they wanted to put in a commercial overlay. And we went and met with then Commissioner um Burden, Amanda Burden, and we had a discussion with her. We we explained to her how the community is very concerned and so on and so forth, and that we want to have input into what goes on there. Uh further down on Northern Boulevard, the homes actually come right up to the Boulevard. So we didn't think it was appropriate to have a commercial overlay at that point, but and uh some of the other locations as well. And she, she agreed with us. She said, well, we'll take that out. We're going to take the commercial overlay proposal out. But to get back to your question, Commissioner, you know, other buildings would be fine that are appropriate to the community. Um other businesses are fine. That auto-related business is out of business right now. So that's, you know, that's gone. But uh things of that sort would be, would be appreciated, I I think, in the community, as long as it met, as long as it was appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Rampershead. Um uh Mr. Euler, I I do want to note uh before we let you go that we did uh receive your packet in the mail, and for the purpose of the commission, it will be in your um in your packages on Friday. So it's going to be coming to you all. So thank you very much uh for your time and for your testimony. Uh now we're going to go back to Mr. LaBelle. Uh Commissioner Benjamin, do you want to pose your question directly?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, is your client, the contract vendor, do you own the site, or do they already own it?
They own the site.
So the business, is there a business on the site currently? It doesn't seem to show up on the pictures.
There is not. It is a vacant site. Um they currently use it uh for storage of materials related to their development business. Uh but other than that, it's, it's just sitting there.
How intense is that storage? I mean, are we talking about two planks, or are we talking about storage of a large amount of construction materials?
It's not two planks. It's material. Um the best thing I can say is that in the event the application does move forward and they are approved, there will be a building on that site and the, you know, the the store, that storage would go away. Um but but that's currently, you know, it's a vacant site, and that's, they're, they just put-
Well, isn't, isn't outdoor storage a use group sixteen?
Yeah, um, Commissioner Benjamin, uh you know, I know that um that to the extent that the Department of Building issues, Department of Buildings issues violations, and that there is a uh a process pursuant to ECB that um they would be cited for such conditions, um that would be the appropriate purview of that agency and that body. Having said that, they are in a current position where there are materials there. Uh they do not want to use the site for the storage of materials going forward. Uh they do want to build a building on the site. But uh, yeah, there's, this is, you know, without uh any admission of guilt, there there currently are materials. If you walk by the site, you'd see that. Uh and they do want to use it uh for a building going forward.
And last but not least, the community seems to be concerned, and I can understand that, with the houses on the street to the north and their rear yards. And in the presentation that you've made, you haven't shown us what you're going to do with your rear yard that abuts the rear yards of the homeowners to the north. So I was wondering if you could give us some idea of the backyard treatment in, on your lot that you would propose?
Um sure. So um there are plans and materials uh which demonstrate a a three-story building. There would be a one-story portion uh that would uh that as pursuant to a commercial overlay would extend into the rear of the building. Uh there would be ground floor parking uh within an enclosed building within that rear. Uh there would be a terrace on the roof of that one-story portion to the rear. Uh and that would, that would abut uh the rear lot lines. Um there are, you know, the, to be clear, when you discuss the residential properties to the rear of these parcels, um there are not, there are not fourteen residential properties that abut this property. There are two. Uh so the remaining twelve residential properties on the block on Forty-third Road currently back up onto existing commercial development, which would be, which would be legal and would remain uh in the event that there was a commercial overlay. Those those uses would not become uh less conforming. They would become conforming in most instances, except for the use group sixteen had been approved by BSA. So I think kind of the discussion around what the community board wants to see, and, you know, I think, I mean, Mr. Euler, I only have the greatest amount of respect for, uh you know, we, our office has been acquainted with him for over twenty years. Um the truth of the matter is that when you get down to it, there wasn't really a lot of specifics about what they didn't want to see here. Uh the fact is that the building was kind of okay, but they wanted to make certain changes, and they're not sure what the uses that they would want would be. It's, it's a matter of site control, and it's a matter of the fact that, you know, we were, the the idea that we can avail ourselves of a BSA variance because of a notch in the property, I will tell you, as a legal matter, is ludicrous. I have been before the Board of Standards and Appeals. I've argued variances before the Courts of the State of New York. Uh the, the uniqueness of a property arising from a notch in the rear to translate that into a use waiver to allow for a commercial use on the first two floors of this property would not translate. Uh and so um respectfully, the discussion that was at the community board of those who supported the application, and I will note it was a split vote, including the Chair of the Land Use Committee, was the reality of what takes place on Northern Boulevard between one eighty-ninth and one ninety-second, which is there is commercial frontage here. Do you want to allow for your owners and applicants to be able to put productive uses there that will also benefit the community in a respectful way? Or do you want them to have to piecemeal, go back to BSA for these changes and require these outdated uses? And so those who voted in favor, including, I would add, the Queensborough President, wanted to opt for allowing for more flexibility to allow for more productive uses on the property. So again, um you know, we appreciate the opportunity to address that, but that's, that's, that's the situation on the ground.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaBelle.
Of course.
Commissioner Rampershead, I saw for a moment you may have had your hand raised. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, um it's actually for uh Mr. LaBelle. I know I had, Commissioner Osorio had asked a question about what are you doing to address the Queensborough President's concerns, and you mentioned that they are going to install they're looking at solar panels and will comply with the local energy code. But I was wondering if you can please have the, your applicant team provide updated drawings to us, once, or uh rendering showing or reflecting uh what you're looking to install? And also, uh will you be installing uh electric vehicle chargers in the cellar portion?
Uh so Commissioner, with regards to the first, happy to provide an updated rendering, uh and we will deliver that to the commission's offices. And with regards to the second, uh I'm unaware of the electric vehicle charging, but when we do respond with those materials, I'd be happy to include information on on electric vehicle charging to the extent it is included. I believe we are, but I want to make sure of that, and we can provide those with supplemental materials.
Great. Thank you very much, uh Mr. LaBelle. Commissioner Rampershead. Don't go far, because I'm going to call on you in a moment for your votes. Uh seeing no other questions for this applicant and no other members of the test, the public wishing to testify, we will close the hearing on one eighty-nine dash ten uh Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay. Uh and uh let me, for a moment, go back to our voting, and I'm going to ask uh you, Madam Secretary, to uh give Mr. Rampershead uh the opportunity to vote, since we lost his connection briefly, uh on calendar four and five.
Uh for Queens, calendar number four, sixty-one-ten Queens Boulevard rezoning, CD two C two-three-zero-zero-five-two ZMQ. And the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning sixty-one-ten Queens Boulevard rezoning. Commissioner Rampershead, for favorable report.
And Chair, thank you for the opportunity to put in my votes. Thank you.
And then on calendar five, uh Commissioner Rampershead is recused.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh Madam Secretary, with that, is there any other business before the commission today?
No, Chair Grabnick. There is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by sucking this hearing through the NYC um Engage portal on the Upcoming Meetings page, through DCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, New York, New York, one zero two-seven-one, thirty-first floor.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Uh to the members of the commission, uh members of the public testifying, applicants, certainly the staff of the department, we thank you all very much for your time and attention here. The time is now ten forty-eight, and we are adjourned. Thank you.